You are watching Access Lapeur County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access Lapeur County dot org.
Good evening. Today is Tuesday, August sixteenth and is our regular Common Council meeting. Please silence your phones and I would like to call this meeting to order by starting with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silent. All right, Ms. Nyla, go on the roll call.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Present.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jagus.
Present.
And Ms. Chalk.
Present.
We have nine present and no one else.
All right, thank you. And we will do the approval of our minutes on for August second at our next council meeting. Are there any reports of any standing committees? Reports of any standing committees? I think tax abatement might be a stand special, yeah. We'll we'll get to that one. Any reports of standing committees? All right, Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you, Madam President. On today, the City Finance Committee held their meeting on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Claims docket for Riverboat Fund Number two zero four two. The original amount for that claim was seventy-five thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars. But before the Finance Committee meeting, Controller Hoffmaster provided us with an additional amount. It was a clerical oversight regarding an additional thirty-six thousand dollars from the Riverboat number funds two zero four two, giving a actual total of one hundred eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars, which was approved and passed by the City Committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tillman. So on our claims docket for Fund twenty forty-two, we have one hundred eleven thousand dollars and three hundred forty, one hundred eleven thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars and zero claims from the Boyd Development Fund for a total of one hundred eleven thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars. That was recommendation by the Finance Committee. Is there a motion for approval?
Go through. Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Privilinski with a second by Councilman Paul Privilinski, Ms. Nyla, on the vote.
Fusion here. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. Now, we have reports of Special Select Committees. Yes, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, the Tax Abatement Committee met. The meeting was called to order at six oh one PM by Chairman Fitzpatrick to to review the current tax abatements. In attendance was Chairman Fitzpatrick, Committee Member Mac, Committee Member Dabney was not in, was not present. Also in attendance was Committee, Councilwoman Tillman, Executive Director of the MCEDC. Clarence Hulse was attending via Zoom and Liliana Franco, also of the MCEDC. There were no questions from the committee regarding the current abatements and the committee voted two zero to recommend that the council approve the current abatements as presented.
And and I will add to that. I think there might have been some confusion. I thought I was still on that committee. I I didn't realize me between me and Mr. Dabney, so and I think Mr. Hulse thought the same thing, so I think we had some confusion because I showed up as well, so I just want to state that. So you said you voted two to zero?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Do we have to do any approval for that?
I believe that Mr. Hulse is going to address.
Okay, so we'll do that under his report. All right, thank you. Thank you for that. Any additional reports from any of the Special Select Committees? I I will just bring up that we did have a workshop on the ARPA appropriations last week and we did have presentations, several presentations that were presented last week to discuss the amounts of money and it's on second reading this evening. All right, reports from Mayor or other city officers and departments. I know we have Mr. Clarence Hulse, who is going to be presenting the twenty twenty-two tax abatements. He has one update. He's on Zoom.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Counsel. I'm here to present to you the twenty twenty-one tax abatement applicants. As discussed in committee, companies are facing the same issues as the last two or three years. They can't find people. As I noted, we had a job fear earlier this year, over eighty companies with over two thousand jobs and two hundred people showed up to the job fear. So if you notice in the packet, a couple of companies would reach out to. That was the issue. They've got jobs. They can't find people. So they've made the investment, whether it's building or equipment. So I asked the council to waive the requirement for the jobs and approve the abatement as presented.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Well, first of all, are there any questions from the counsel of Mr. Hulse? That being said, is there a motion to approve with the waiver of the the positions?
I shall move.
We have a motion by Councilman Paul Privilinski.
Support.
And a second by Councilman Don Privilinski, Ms. Nyla, on the vote.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. Are there any, thank you, Mr. Hulse. Are there any additional reports from the mayor or other city officers and departments? Do you want to come up now? We can. Thank you, Chief Campbell. There were a couple of questions on the ARPA for the body worn and just wanted to make sure he was able to present that since he, we did have a presentation on the flock.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
Chairman. One of the items that we have as a request would be body worn cameras. Currently, the system that we are using, we're out of contract and we would like to, one of the reasons why we're asking for this to be used, ARPA money to be used for this is because of the length of time it takes from signing a new contract and actually getting the product in. Whatever it is that we purchase in any realm of life right now, you've got an extended wait time. We also think that this is superior to what we have right now. I brought City IT Dave Hutchins with us to talk about one of the issues that we have with our current system.
What are you doing tonight? Um, so.
State your name, please.
David Hutchins, Network Administrator. So our current issue right now, right, is suggesting that we go to cloud-based solution. Everything we have right now for the in-car cameras are hardware-based and while we designed it in about twenty fifteen, implemented in twenty sixteen, we knew it was going to have about a seven-year lifecycle. Currently, we're getting close to that lifecycle. Right now, we're using about ninety percent of our storage and the current solution is no longer supported by the manufacturers. It's reached its end of life. The replacement for an Iceland server, the same quality, modernized with the needed extra space is we're looking at about one point five million dollars, not including an extra charge of service fee, servers and software. What has changed since over the time? When we originally created the system, it was, it had a retention of about two weeks for like minor stuff like pulling somebody over for a traffic violation, minor traffic violation, light out. Now, the mandate has been pushed out. That minimum is a hundred and ninety days for every video, which has put quite a lot of stress on our data storage. Another thing is we get ready to move with technology, things like HD coming to the issue, which will need more storage for that. One of the issues we're starting to see with the prices of hardware, especially with the chip shortage, is hardware prices are through the roof. It's now at the point now where cloud-based solutions are pretty viable. In the past, it was kind of iffy in between, but we've started to make a change from hardware-based to cloud-based. Some of the benefits that we're looking for compared to the current system, the current system, we can't update. We have to pay for a license. We have to update everything and it's pricey. I'm sure most of you use Office three sixty-five, familiar with the cloud-based solution. If something like Teams or something pops up, we don't pay for it. They just provide it. Same thing with the cloud-based solutions for our video. They will just provide the functionality on top of it. So that way, every seven years or so, we don't have to come back here and be like, hey, we need more money for storage. We can just add that feature on to the current cloud-based solution. They'll allow us to expand, give us, and we don't have to worry about updating because they currently update as we go along.
David, if you would, would you talk a little bit about the incident that we had where we thought we possibly had a crash and could have lost a large percentage of evidence because of the current system?
Well, the system we had, we had an issue where it wasn't deleting the old retention files and passed its dates and it had gone through and we had the system crashing. We had lost some files. We're able to get less to figure out what files they were, but yeah, we did lose quite a bit of files and that did hurt us. So we're hoping for something to be an online-based, have a little bit more redundancy. So that way, you know, we don't have to worry about any type of loss in video. And from the IT standpoint, it's much easier to administer. I have to set up the user, set the privilege. Now officers can hit the ground running and get the information they need and that they're allowed access to.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for IT Dave?
Before you do that, can you just expand on, because I know some, some people have seen the presentation, just expand on the cars and the body, the vest and how today you don't have systems that work together?
Correct. We, we actually, we have the body-worn camera. It's currently a small box about this big that could easily be taken off or whatever and you manually turn that that device on. It's on a different platform than what we use in our in-car camera. So we're talking about two different systems. We're talking about the cameras on that were on our body versus the cameras that are in the in-car. This system would bring both of them together. So and I can go over more of this if you like.
All right. I think Dalia was, yes, Councilwoman Dalia.
Yes, I was just going to ask, how long is the order process right now if if this does go through? I mean, how much time will it take for you to get everyone equipped?
That we don't know. But we do know that there is a backlog on anything that you purchased instead. So that's why we wanted to put this request in.
Thank you, Councilman Paul.
So you're, are you talking about getting more money besides what's on this resolution of six hundred thousand dollars? Because I see on this handout that you have a one-year payment of six hundred thousand.
Correct.
Then you have a five-year contract of one point five million. So are you, by getting into this one-year payment, then is that the first year of the con?
Yeah.
How, how, how is the, or is this a total of two point one million?
No, sir. A good question. The total price for a five-year contract is one point five million. What we're asking for the ARPA funds is just the six hundred thousand year one payment and then the rest would just be incorporated into the budget, the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from years two through five. When you look at that one point five million price tag, we're currently paying that right now anyway, somewhere in that ballpark. We're paying approximately the same thing for both technologies and this would bring everything into one. Did I answer your question?
Well, yes and no.
Okay.
So when you talk about you're rolling that into the budget, what budget are you talking about rolling it into and out of?
As.
As the remainder of the
The two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year is what we would ask, what we would try to, what we would have in the budget currently. That's how we do it right now. It's budgeted in every year about that approximate amount. And we just, what we're asking from the ARPA funds is just that initial payment. And then we would continue on like we always have with the payment for these and we're paying about two hundred and twenty thousand right now every year for our current system.
And and the six hundred thousand was to do the total replace of all of the cameras in the cars and the
Yes.
Vests.
And I think, I think that there's some benefits for this system compared to the other one. This is a, if you look at the sheet I provided, this is a policy-based solution, which basically means that we can determine when the cameras are turned on. These cameras are literally built into the vest and let's say an officer is dispatched to a domestic call and we can put it in our policy every time an officer is dispatched to a domestic call, every time he's dispatched to a shooting, every time he's dispatched to a robbery, that these cameras would automatically turn on. And that is a conversation that we can have with the City Council, how we want these to operate. And I think that that's a very attractive option to have. This is the only camera system that has been accredited by the NAACP. They looked at the value that this brings, especially some of the issues that an officer can have within an emergency situation, turning the camera on or off, it removes some of the human element. So we have the option that when it's dispatched, it turns on automatically. In addition to that, it has an ability to sense when an officer is falling, falling down in a situation and gives them an alert. It also has the capacity to do live video streaming. Let's say an officer is at a call. He's at a protest or something like that. We would have the ability to tap into that camera and see what's going on in real time. There's also an intelligent holster activation feature where anytime the officer pulls his holster, then the camera would automatically come on. You know, those are some situations that all police officers face in stressful times. You're there to to protect and serve and you don't have enough time to think about turning that camera on. It removes that error. And it also has the automatic license plate recognition capability with it as well. Not only, I know we've talked about the flock previously, but this also has the ability to have that it's an option if we want it. And it actually works with a Sony system, but it's, it's not something that we have to have, but the option is available. And that's why we think that this is a superior system. You couple that with the understanding that it is cloud-based and we don't have the possibility of losing the data like we, we almost did when we got a call from Andrew Matanic. We think this is the superior system. So again, this is a request and the primary driver is we want to get these started. Now we're actually out of contract and we're going to, getting ready to go month by month. So we're in negotiating again, trying to see what they're going to do. They know we're out of contract, so they're giving us some liberty, seeing what we want to do because they want our business, but we'd like to go down this pathway.
Are you, are you going to be with the same vendors? Are you, are you looking at going with the same outfit?
For.
With this system?
And the in-car camera. It's totally, it's different from what we've had before.
Right.
The other one was data-driven. This is, this one is cloud-based. But it's the, this, the body-worn camera and the cameras that we'll have in the car will be under the same umbrella, the same company. Currently, we have two different companies.
Okay. Now, so I'm looking down the road here and I just want to be clear and make this point is that we are going to be getting money next year and so that this is part of the money that is, that tax should be used for. So I just wanted to make that point. It's got, I'm just making that to the console because we're getting ready to go on budget hearings. You know, that, that's what it was there for. So that's going to free up other monies. All right, then. Thank you, Chief Deon.
Any more questions for me?
Yes, Councilman Don.
Yeah, Chief, I'd have to say that I was on the consult, previous consult when Chief Swistec was here and we provided the whole police department with body cameras and car cameras. In fact, we were the first department in Lapeur County that every officer was suited up with a body camera and I was always, and I know you, you put up a couple of examples and when this camera, you know, would go on. I guess if he went to a domestic dispute, he would have to activate it, right? Yeah, he, whatever he did, he's got to activate it. I was always under the assumption, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, even with the traffic stop, that was the whole purpose of having a body cam. Now, when you got out of the car, you were walking up to somebody and if somebody's down the block and you're, you want to talk to them, that this camera was videotaping all of this. Isn't that the way the camera works? I mean, for him, for the officer, you said camera, he's got to turn it on all the time?
Yes, he has to turn it on. And what, what literally happens is once he turns it on, it's recording, but it'll go, once you turn it on, it'll go back, whatever the set time is, I believe, maybe two minutes and it'll capture what happened two minutes before he turned it on. But the current system is you, is manual and that's why sometimes where's the video? Well, the officer didn't, wasn't able to put it on. He could have been in a stressful situation and didn't have time to put it on. This kind of, this removes that human error and that's why I think it was approved by the NAACP because it takes the human error out of it. And there are certain things that we together can determine. These are when that, this is the time that the camera has to come on. And the county currently uses this system and they haven't, haven't had any problems with it.
Okay. And then another question, and I know that Controller Hoffmaster is here this evening. And you said that your previous cameras, that you paid for all the rental and what have you out of the general fund. In this situation here, why can't we use the general fund to pay for this? Why do we have to use ARPA funds? And can we finance fifty percent of this, say, three hundred thousand and still get three hundred thousand out of the general fund?
Except for me?
No, that was for, uh.
Okay.
Controller Hoffmaster.
I don't know if, if the, well, there's three of us on the ARPA committee. So one of the, the, the conversation, because Yvonne wasn't there. So when we had the conversation, because I asked the question if we could transition these gradually, but the issue was you need to do it all at once. Either, if you're going to do the cameras, you can't buy a few and have them on multiple systems, right? So there's an upfront cost that was more than what they normally spend in the general fund. And, and so, you know, just, I thought it was a good use and, and as the committee was talking through it and we listened to the presentation, that's why, how it ended up here is because, yes, they, they do have money in their budget for next year for their two hundred twenty, whatever they normally have. But to get all of the brand-new vests and cameras, there is a cap, there is an expense upfront. So that was reasoning. I know that we still had a couple more questions, but that was the reason that we discussed. I don't know if anybody else saw it differently.
I, I think I know where, where Don's going. And I was going to ask the same thing with Yvonne, the, the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we're paying every year. And it sounds like, well, I was thinking and we were thinking had to, so I think you answered it since you said we're out of contract, meaning we've already probably paid the hundred, or the two twenty already. Because he was thinking or, and I was thinking maybe we could use that two twenty to go toward the six hundred thousand and then we could get the balance out of ARP. Was that what you were asking, Don?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we've already made that, that two twenty payment. So that's why we need to total six, six hundred thousand. So I was going to ask the same question.
Because it was appropriated this year already that we're spending and then you have it in next year's budget already for the two hundred and twenty-five. But to get the
The setup, reboot.
Right.
Everything else, this is a, this system is a little bit different where we're actually have vests that go with it. The camera is embedded in the vest. And you don't have that, that issue with not the camera being knocked off or pulled off in a stuff or a fight. So it's different. There is some other things that go with it. And for us as a department, understanding that the, with anything that we purchase in this day and age, you're going to have a wait time. If we wait till January to start, that's going to extend the time when we can get the product. And I can't answer exactly when that is, but I know it's going to be extended, whatever timeframe we do that in.
Okay, but with the cameras that you have now, car cameras, best cameras, is there anything wrong with the system at all or will the system go defunct? If we were to wait until January or, yeah, or, yeah, January and say use you know, three hundred thousand ARP, get the ball rolling, I guess, I don't know if you can do that or not. And then when the light tax comes in, use some of that money towards this because that money can be used towards this type of thing. I mean, would that hinder? I mean, it's the camera system right now. Well, the funk are out of step with what we need to protect our officers and to protect the public.
Yeah, it's still functional, but there are some drawbacks to it. It's outdated technology and that's why we had IT Dave come up and talk about some of the challenges that we had. We got a phone call from Andrew Matanic saying you may lose sixty to seventy percent of your video storage because of the current system that we're under. And that was really, really bad for us. Is that correct? How much, what was the percentage that we almost lost at that time?
It's not supported by the manufacturer.
But it was a pretty high percentage. Okay. So it's outdated technology. To answer your question, could we continue with what we had? Yes. But also understand we're on a month-to-month basis right now, which is more than likely going to be more expensive going that route.
Yes, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. So the payment or whatever it was made already, that covers us for a month or for the next year?
The contract is over.
Okay.
So with five years ago, when it was made, it was
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, solidified, but it's done. The contract is over and now we're, we're just entered into month-to-month.
Okay, so with this new system, what would the, the lifespan of this system be since the last one was, what did you say? It was five or six years or seven years that the other system was slated for. So how, how, what would the lifespan of this system be? I don't know if IT Dave could answer that. Can't set a mic, so we can.
If we enter a service contract, usually what they'll do is they'll automatically update our hardware as long as we're paying the yearly license fee. So we shouldn't need to do anything. So maybe every now and then revisit our need for storage. But usually like we were went through the body cams, they automatically updated to the third generation, from second to third generation as long as we were paid up on our license fee.
So this, so this will be an ongoing thing where the equipment will follow the, the technology updates?
Yep, so it should, they should cover all the hardware and stuff as we go through. At least with the body cameras, I'm not too sure with the in-car cameras, but I'm willing to bet it's a similar because they want, they want you to pay by license. That's when they get their, when they make the profit.
Okay, and how, how safe is this, the cloud server that they're using?
Um, it depends on which one. I haven't verified. Honestly, this would probably be a question more for the IT Director, Andrew Botanic. He was unable to make today's, but I don't have the exact detail on that specific site.
Right, because I'm not, I'm not an IT person, but I know with cloud, there is some potential for it being hacked or data leaked at some point.
There is. Mostly encryption on these systems are highly secure because it's not just, you know, all the police departments use them, you know, many federal agencies use them. So they usually have a pretty high security practice. I don't think that'd be too much of a worry.
Okay, then one final question. So what would the turnaround be for like public access to cam footage? I know it has to go through the redaction process and that part of it. Will this system make that process simpler or will it be the same?
I can't honestly answer that question, but I'll get that answer for you as well as the questions you proposed previously. I'll send it to the entire council in an email. As well as, uh, the questions you bro, posed previously, I'll send it to the entire council in an email, that proportion I don't know.
Yes, um, any additional questions? I'll make sure, I can't see, yes, Paul.
On the lines of what, uh, Councilman Don Prisbalinsky was, uh, talking about. So we're out of contract right now, so we didn't make the, um. To the yearly payment this year, correct?
Hmm, we, we had a contract that it's been paid for, it ended, and I believe May thirtieth or June thirtieth. The contract ended, and so after June thirtieth, um. The expectation from the company was that we redid the contract, and they would have probably allowed us to pay. Come January, because they understand how city budgets run, but right now, because we're not in contract with them, we're going month to month until we. Uh, sign another contract.
Are, are we paying anything a month?
We will, we will be.
But we're not right now.
We're not, we're not right now simply because we just transitioned and we're waiting to see what they're, they're waiting for us. Because they wanna negotiate, because they still want our business. And so we're waiting to see what that month to month is, and that was one of the reasons why we wanted to enter into a contract. As soon as possible to not have to deal with the month to month payment.
So we still own, I mean, it's appropriated money and, uh, from last year's budget though, isn't that correct, Controller Hoffmaster?
Yeah.
Or is it paid for?
Is there, that is the question, that's what I was getting at, so there's money in the budget, but. Is, can you answer that, Controller Hoffmaster, is there money in the budget, and where is it at?
I believe at the beginning of the year, we paid the final payment of the current contract. So we have already expended that appropriation. We are now going to expend more money on a month to month that we don't actually have appropriated, we'll be using. Um, other funds that are, are budgeted to cover the month to month.
So you, one moment, so there was not any money in any of those items. Contracted or even to, uh, set aside money, there's no money in that police budget at all. To cover any of this appropriation?
You, you're asking if we appropriated money in the twenty twenty two budget for this project that was just presented to you? Is that what you're asking?
For next year?
No, I'm asking for this year, you didn't even.
We, we already expended the money that was appropriated, we paid the final year of the contract at the beginning of this year.
So, and it, well, it wasn't, it was only till May?
Correct.
I believe the end of June.
Or the end of June?
Yes.
So it wasn't really a yearly.
The contract, I started five years ago in June, and the payments were made then, and now it ended in June of this year. And so, uh, because companies understand how budgets work. That final payment was made at the beginning of the year with their monies that were appropriated for that piece, but now we're into month, month to month. At this point, correct, that's correct.
Well, I guess my final comment is that. You know, there's, I think that when we're in this kind of situation, this has nothing to do with you, Chief, is that. This financial stuff is that, I think that the console finance committee should have been made aware of this. When we approved the budget, so we were prepared for this, this year, not like. You know, we're sitting here right now trying to figure it out.
And I'll take responsibility for that, I, I understand, I understand exactly where you're coming from, I'll take responsibility as the head of our department. I should have known that this contract was ending at this point, so I'll take responsibility for that, I'll own that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, um, so we'll look for an email from you, and, um, thank you for, uh, any additional questions? Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, uh, Ms. Nyla, any petitions?
There are no petitions this evening.
Alright, communications?
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on August ninth from Attorney Shaw Briedman regarding the council's appointment. To the County Economic Development Commission.
And we have Matt Riordan here this evening, um, to speak, um, on this matter, this. Alright.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chairman, Madam President and Councilmembers, Matt Riordan with the Lepore County Economic Development Department. The, uh, county, uh, has an investment opportunity that will require going through a process through industrial revenue bonds. I know that the city of Michigan City has an economic development commission in place, and they've done projects, as a matter of fact, I can. That I'm thinking back, the last project I was involved in in Lepore County. Had to do with Sullivan Palatech, an industrial revenue bond done for their new facility out there in twenty. Uh, this particular project is, is deep into the county, and there was a desire to create their own E, economic development commission. Indiana Code thirty six, seven, twelve, requires the most populous city. In the county to make an appointment to this three person body. The other two appointments come from the county council and county commissioners. I'm here tonight to ask the council to consider making an appointment to this body. Um, so that we can continue forward with a potential industrial revenue bond project, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, and I, and I asked for someone to come, because, um, I know that several years, it's been a while that we had an appointment years ago. But I guess it just, you just dissolve it, and then you bring it back when you need it.
You know, it's an app, it's a, it's a kind of an at will committee, you come together to really do three different functions. One of them is to create what's called an economic development target area for commercial, uh, retail abatements. The other one's for an industrial revenue bond, and the final one is for pollution control bond, so it's very limited activity. So, uh, unlike a redevelopment commission, or your, obviously your council or your committee, so it's kind of an at. On demand, we're gonna have a meeting, review a project, make a recommendation to, you know, the, the community's fiscal body. There's no funds exchanged, it's not a debt on any of the communities or the county or anything like that, it's passed through.
Thank you, any questions, yes, Councilman Don?
Uh, can I, can I ask, is it privy to say what the project is before?
Project, uh, certainly, it's a project that would be purchasing a vacant manufacturing building. And the investment of about nine point five million into the purchase of the building and the facility. It will also require additional capital to, uh, buy another portion of the property on, on the site. And, uh, we're kind of working through that process, using the industrial revenue bond program, it doesn't happen very much anymore, but. It created a favorable interest rate, especially with kind of how the markets are right now. Then a lot of the company move forward and be able to get the capital together, so we're hopeful in the next, uh, month or so to have a meeting of the. Uh, Economic Development Commission to review the project in detail, I know that the, the company is preparing the paperwork and that. And I want, uh, I believe they have retained bond council to move forward with the, with the application process.
So, so we don't have a process, any other questions? Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Paul.
So are you, um, Mr. Riordan, are you looking at. Wanting an appointment by our next council meeting?
That would be great.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a timeframe.
Yeah, so, yes, Councilwoman.
So has the other two already been?
They have not, the council, the redevelopment, or excuse me, the county commissioners meet tomorrow. And the county council meets the twenty second, so they'll make their appointment.
Yeah, so ours be the first one, so the question to the council, I don't know if anyone is interested in number. So, um, it doesn't have to be a council person, it could be someone we appoint as well, but we don't have, um, uh. I, I would recommend it being a council person for. These of, we don't have anything in the books, I don't believe, because it, it's at will, from the count, from the county. So I don't know if there's any conversation, or any?
Well, Madam President, I'd be willing to, uh, step up and take that appointment. I'm, I'm off during the day, so, you know, it'd be probably more convenient for me than some other council members.
Any, any, anyone opposed to that, cause if, if not, anyone opposed to that?
She making that an emotion?
I'm, I'm going, I'm gonna ask for nomination if he, if, if nobody's opposed to that, anybody opposed to that?
I would make a motion by acclamation, we appoint Councilman Don Prisbalinsky to that, uh.
What is it called?
To start, uh, appointment immediately.
Alright, is there a second?
Support.
Alright, we have support by, uh, Councilwoman Tracy Tillman, Ms. Nyla, wanna vote?
Mr. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prisbalinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prisbalinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
And Mr. Matt.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
That made it easy, we're first.
Thank you very much, and your first meeting's tomorrow at seven thirty. We'll be in contact once we, uh, get, uh, get the, uh, get the other points together, and, uh, we'll let you know, thanks.
Alright, thanks, thank Mr. Riordan, I'll be there early too. Alright, thank you. Alright, uh, our first resolution, um, by title only.
Have any resolutions this evening?
I turned the page and there's nothing there, alright, our first ordinance by title only, I'm first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending section ninety eight dash eighty five of Michigan City Municipal Code. Known as addictions, additions, not additions, to the sanitary district to amend. The annexation conditions and procedures, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Ms. Jacobs, Mr. Don Prisbalinsky. Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Paul Prisbalinsky, and Mr. Dabney.
Any comments from the sponsors? Comments from the sponsors, I, I will just make a general comment on the next two. Um, uh, the, this next one, this one and the next one are gonna be sections, uh, in our. Code to, uh, provide a process for annexations and working with the water and sewer department. Uh, as we provide extensions, uh, many of you know that. We went through a whirlwind of. I don't know how many meetings with, um, the extension, uh, for Long Beach, but I know. That several council members here have met with Skylar, have met with Clarence. Uh, and, um, have talked about, you know, waters who are within the city limits and making sure that we take care of what we have. And, uh, before we go outside of the city limits and, and having a process in place, so. With that being said, any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the public? Alright, comments from the council, yes, Councilwoman Tillman.
Thank you, Madam President, I would like to be added, um, as a co-sponsor.
Awesome. Thank you, any additional comments on first reading? Alright, with that being said, this will be held over for second reading, Ms. Nyla, second ordinance on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, creating section ninety eight dash eighty six and section ninety eight dash eighty seven. In the Michigan City Municipal Code to establish conditions and procedures for additions to the sanitary district. And this is also introduced by Ms. Deitch, Ms. Jacobs, Mr. Don Prisbalinsky, and Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Paul Prisbalinsky, and Mr. Dabney.
Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Alright, any comments from the council? Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam President, again, I also like to be added as co-sponsor please.
Alright.
And have a, just a quick comment.
Yes.
President. I just wanna say that this is long overdue. Um, I'll have obviously more to say about it as we get down to second reading and everything like that, uh, but this is something I've been talking about for a while in terms of annexation. And, um, I am happy that we're starting to tackle this issue here in Michigan City, so. I'll, and for time's sake, I won't go on about it, but in my mind, it's about time.
Yeah, awesome, thank you. Uh, any additional comments, this will be held over for second reading, thank you. Alright, next ordinance on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, creating section two dash four one oh point four in the Michigan City Municipal Code. To establish a public safety lit fund, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Don Prisbalinsky, and Mr. Dabney.
Any comments from the sponsors? Yes, Councilman Don?
Uh, this basically puts a, uh, procedure in a place in order. For the lit funds as, uh, they come in, and it also explains the thirteen different. Categories that the lit fan, lit fund can be spent.
Awesome, thank you. Any additional comments from the sponsors? Alright, comments from the public? Comments from the public? No, comments from the council, Councilman Paul?
I just would like to be added as a sponsor for the, for this, uh, ordinance, please.
Alright. Alright, any additional comments from the council? Alright, this will be held over for second reading. Alright, Ms. Nyla, first ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP coronavirus. Local physical recovery fund for the fourth addition to the initial plan. For use of a portion of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds. Through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for various matters, including but not limited to community grant funding. For small businesses and nonprofits, city projects and equipment improvements for certain city departments. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Uh, Dabney, Ms. Jacobs, and Mr. Paul Prisbal.
And this was advertised in a Herald Dispatch on August third, twenty twenty two, um, there will be a formal public hearing this evening. Um, today is August sixteen, twenty twenty two, comments from the sponsors, yes, Councilman Paul? Alright, alright, sounds good, any, any comments from the sponsors? Alright, we're going into our formal public hearing, any comments from the public?
Uh, Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen O, Ohio Street, and I say this is for part of the provisions for city projects. I'd like to see maybe perhaps spending the art money on the, the machinery that just described the roads. Uh, although, we've talked about this with the Board of Works this morning, I think this would be a great thing to have, I, it'd be something we can even. Even lease out to other, other municipalities and rent it out, and maybe get, get the money back. Uh, I believe our street department could be trained to u- use this equipment, I think that's really needed here, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any additional comments for our formal public hearing, any online? Negative, alright, any comments from the public? That closes our formal public hearing, comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Paul?
Um, since one of the deputy chiefs are here, I'd like to ask them about this, uh. Money for, uh, the, uh, fire trucks?
Yes. Thank you for being here this evening.
The, uh, amount, the, uh, what are the, uh, the engines that. You wanna replace, were any of those engines, uh. Or fire trucks? Were they any of those, the trucks that were sent out to have the, uh, frames replaced?
The truck that, uh, Mike Jesneski, Deputy Chief, Michigan City Fire Department, um, the truck. That we had worked on is actually a frontline engine right now. Um, that is a, that truck is fifteen years old. Um, and our, what our plan would be was to take, would be to take that truck and move it to, to be one of our spare trucks. As we know, things go wrong with fire trucks, and if we don't have spares, then something goes wrong, we have nothing to, to respond. So to answer your question. Yes, that, it's kind of indirectly replacing that, that truck is right now being used as a frontline engine, we'll put it as a spare engine. And then the new one will take over as the frontline engine.
So, um. Did, uh. What's, what's wrong with that engine that you gotta replace it, that you're using it as a frontline engine right now? And if there is something wrong with it, because you just said you're gonna get a truck and you're gonna make it a spare. So if it's a spare, why, why do you have to take it out of service?
NFPA recommends ten years of an upper lifespan on a frontline engine, and that truck is fifteen years old. So we're just trying to go along with the NFPA recommendation, NFPA recommendation.
Well.
We're like fifty percent past the recommended lifespan on that truck.
And what, what about the other fire truck? That you that you wanna replace? Cause there's two of them here to replace.
It's only one. I know we were only.
It's only one.
Okay, I misread I misread this when I was looking at. So you're telling me that it did it pass the uh UL inspection?
It did not pass all of the inspections, no. And we're currently trying to get trying to get it fixed so that it would pass all the inspections.
Okay, so I guess what I what I'm driving at is this. If you had it out of service and it was at the manufacturer, why the heck didn't why the heck didn't uh somebody get this stuff fixed when it was out of service? And at at the manufacturer getting re- uh getting repaired?
I can't answer why they didn't fix what was broken at the time, or not necessarily broken, but things, I believe that was a few years ago. I don't have the numbers in front of me when those trucks went back and got restored. And I think most of the work was bodywork that was getting or framework that was getting done. It wasn't on the pumps, it wasn't on on all of the operating features of the truck. I believe it was just on the framework. What it got sent back to the manufacturer for.
Well, okay, I I just uh I also have a uh I I really don't have any more questions for you, but I uh I guess I'm gonna request that I I get the information from all the trucks out of the latest uh UL inspection. And what was deficient, because a lot a lot of people don't understand, you know, that these thing that these have to have an inspection. But also to the console, I have a problem with that this is another example that you can uh this is what this lit lit money should be used for. Okay? And that money will be coming in soon. So I think that we need to uh s- specifically look look at that. That's that's all I got. Chief, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
And uh
Yes.
One more uh comment on uh not not for you, chief.
Thank you.
Matter. Thank you. The um infrastructure project D that um I did some uh inquiries over the last few days and came up with the facts of the amount of pipe and the methodology of ins- installing this is that this this money is not enough to get the project done. And that the only thing that we were given was a map, was a s- actual like a study. And uh the cost that was there, I think it was uh the design hasn't been done, the engineering hasn't been done. And that with with that being said, there's other technologies that to do this in a more proficient and economical way is that you can uh do the HDD and that's a hydraulic si- uh side drill. And um actually, they do do this process and put uh piping, water pipe in and supply. But I think with that being said, there's another item that I in my inquiries, it was brought up to me that we may be on a different timeline because you cannot put annexed properties on the books. And this was annexed during a census year. And that this technical question, and this is a technical question, that we might have more lead time on this whole project. So our uh attorney is out of out of town. And I caught Skylar this afternoon. And I was uh talking to him. And he said, yes, that's correct. It 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 could, it's a technical issue that we need to get an answer for. We could have be running into more time. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to have amendments on third reading till we get uh back. And that would be at our next meeting. At least I could get an answer from Jewel when he gets back in town to see if this is actually a technicality that we're not under this three-year time period. So I think that there's some uh it's a question that needs to be answered. It's cause we could have more time to find more money to do this project, get this project done. I think it uh it's not an outlandish uh request. I think that in doing our due diligence, uh we need to uh uh I would hope that everybody would support that so we can get an answer from uh Jewel.
So so we have a motion in support, uh motion by Councilman Paul and uh second by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick. And and I will go back to comments um after the motion is complete on the ordinance so that everybody who didn't get to answer the asked the questions can. So the motion is to allow um amendments on third reading um at the next council meeting if if needed, so that we can get some answer questions answered and supported by um Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick. Uh Ms. Nyla on the vote?
Mr. Don Prezabulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prezabulinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and two opposed.
Alright, so going back to the ordinance, um Councilman Dabney. Uh you had your light on before.
Oh, yeah, uh uh when we're talking about the Yeah, just when we were talking about the uh the lit tax money in regards to being able to use that as early as next year. I mean, uh I believe I'd see Yvonne in back there, you can correct me, but uh if we start collecting this year, we're only gonna have about a quarter
Yeah.
of a year from like October to December. So we won't have a full year collection, so uh to expect to be able to use those to cover big dollar items is probably not gonna be in our best interest to look forward to lean on that that lit money. Um if we have those collections or whether not um if we do, it's only gonna be about a quarter of the year rather than a full year's collection of lit tax money. So as a council, we need to be careful about trying to lean on um the dollar amounts that we were told we would have for a full year. So we need to be careful of that. But I do understand what Paul is talking about. That that is a good idea. I thought of it as well. That's why I asked that question um before, so.
Um yes, Councilwoman Jacobs.
Thank you. Uh I just have a comment about the uh sewer project and the water project in the annexed land. We were gonna have to do that project anyway, and the purpose of just paying for part of it was to order materials. Because if the materials are not ordered, they are so backed up that there's not even a possibility of starting that project. So we just approved a portion of it. Yes, it hasn't been engineered and it hasn't been finished. But we know that we're gonna need to have the pipe and the pipe is like like seventy-two months out or something ridiculous like that. So we approved that amount so that we can get the project started. Yes, there's gonna have to be more money and I was urging the mayor to like reach out to Congressman Mervan and you know, other places to fund this because there is a lot of infrastructure funding out there. We just need to be more aggressive to pursue.
Agree with that. Um any additional comments from the council, guest Councilman Paul?
Um with uh the comments that Councilwoman Zaga's made did uh with urging the uh mayor to reach out, do you know if he's done that?
Yeah, we don't know. We haven't heard anything.
See, I I just I I that's a good idea. And and the whole thing is, yes, there is a a lot of money out there. And if you don't ask, you don't get. It's just like at home. If the kids want ice cream, if you don't ask, you don't get. Right? It's like, so I I can, I think that the only here here's the whole my thought process about on this whole thing. There's something that needs to be answered and we need to find out. And then we need to find out, you know, I guess that we need to take the bull by the horn and be the driving force here and pass a resolution asking the mayor to reach out.
We did.
And you you know, that that's just, I mean, it's not outlandish. But I mean, we gotta go on record at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman um Paul. And that we did pass a resolution um in April. And uh so I don't I don't know. He signed it, so I'm not sure what has happened since then. And I know that uh the grant that we didn't receive that uh the controller's office is in the process of working um um working on uh put putting another grant in, EDA grant um and submission in over the next month, so. Um so they're still working on it. Um alright, any additional comments? Yes, Councilman?
Yes, so uh there are a lot of urgent matters in this ordinance. And I was hoping that we would go from second to third reading today. But I guess it it there seems to be, I mean, like just to get the flock system set up and things like that, you know. I think we have a little bit of an urgency, so that's my my feeling on this. I think that we're kinda dragging our feet, but I'd like to move forward.
Yeah, and and I mean, that's if you want to make that as a motion, all I I'll I'm gonna interject my will on this one, but um I I will say that I I like having the three readings for this particular thing because there's so much in it. And with the flock system, uh they had the opportunity to start the pilot without us getting through this process, so we could have had that already. So that I don't think there's gonna that's gonna make a difference. Um cause we could have had it already. Um so I mean, it's up to, you know, it's the will of council. Any additional comments from the council? With that being said, this will be held over for third reading. Ms. Ms. Nyla, uh ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the local income tax economic development formerly known as CED fund for the professional services associate associated with the Michigan City Housing Authority hearings. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Sean Fitzpatrick.
This was advertised in the Herald Dispatch on August third, twenty twenty-two. Tonight, we will have a formal public hearing. Any comments from the sponsor? Any comments from the sponsor? Comments from the public? This is a formal public hearing this evening. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Did you have any comments, Mr. Ernie? Nope. Okay, comments from the council? Any comments from the council? This will be held over for third reading. Next ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance vacating a portion of the public street in the city of Michigan City located north of the intersection of Superior Avenue and Nippersink Avenue. And this is introduced by Ms. Jacobs.
This was advertised also in Herald Dispatch on August third, twenty twenty-two, and we will hold a formal public hearing this evening. Um any comments from the sponsor?
Uh just to say that all the different departments have signed off on this, is you've got a packet of every department saying that they're okay with this. Again, they're gonna put a fence around the station so that it's a little bit more secure, and that's all that's going on here. And I believe we have Mr. McManaman on the line if you guys have any questions to ask of him.
Alright, thank you. Um any comments from the public?
Tommy Klovick, thirteen sixteen Ohio City. I researched these properties on Shire Beacon. The city has no deed, no title, no this property has no value. It's really not transferable. Um I do find it interesting that if if we were vacating a property, it goes through the council, but if you're Pershing, this property goes through the Board of Works, but you learn something new every day. I just think you know, just go ahead, I'll move move to third reading and vacate the property and allow NIPSCO to provide our electrical services. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Klovick. Any additional comments from the public? This is a formal public hearing. Uh Mr. Matt Manama, do you have any comments for us this evening? You're on mute.
Maybe this time will be better. My apologies. Uh
Oh, no problem.
Uh I you certainly can answer questions. Just wanted to thank the council for providing us the opportunity to clarify the request for the vacation. Um I can go into further detail if you would like.
Anybody have any questions? No questions? I think we're good. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Uh I would just stand by for the next one. Any additional comments from the council?
Yeah, Madam President.
Yes.
Uh myself and Skylar took a ride out where this property's supposed to be. The only thing this the only thing this property exists on is on is on a plat map. There's no streets there. There's nothing but sand dunes there, okay? And I am all and although it's a sand dunes and it's it's on a plat, if NIPSCO wants the property, they need to put a fence up, they need to have this little square or whatever it is, a piece of property, then NIPSCO can pay for the property. I'm not giving any city property up to anybody, you know, that if they want it, especially a conglomerate like that. A uh very deep-pocketed power company that on one hand wants to raise our rates, right? Electric and gas, but on the other hand, they want us to give property to them. You want it, pay us the money it's worth, and then we'll be okay. We can take that money. We can improve somebody's park, we can buy maybe another squad car, or maybe get ready to pay the increased power rates that the city of Michigan City is gonna have to pay in that year's budget after this power increase gets approved downstate. Those are my comments on this. I will not be supporting this at all. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Councilman Paul Prezabulinski.
I I'm gonna have to, you know, to think about it is that maybe uh the correct verbiage that we should use is maybe they should make a donation of some sort. Because if you want them to purchase it, they gotta go to the Board of Works as Tommy explained to us. Thank you very much, Thomas. And uh I I think maybe I I have a I have a problem with it in other generalities is that, you know, they wanna shut down the uh and I know that there's a a I think everybody by nature or at this point, tu- their life has some kind of environmental awareness in them and that, you know, they wanna shut down the Schaefer plant, a power plant. They want they've already shut down, you know, Bailey. They they shut down, um they want they're gonna shut down the NIPSCO plant here with environmental problems. And they want us to pay for it. I got a real problem with that. Real a real problem with that because you know, uh NIPSCO uh wants to go to a totally uh and there's a big push on this environmentally friendly green program. But let me tell you something. I just watched a program that the grid is not ready for that nationally. In that it's a, yeah, it's a good thing for supplemental power, but did you ever think about when they close down these plants? And they've invested so much money on making them clean, it's like, what's the real purpose? I I'm just saying, you know, putting this out there is that, well, number one, they get rid of their employees. Number two, they get rid of their property taxes. And and number three, they make us the ratepayers at the mercy of buying power off on off the grid that of buying power off, on, off the grid that they can't supply. So I really think that we know as people, we need to have an awakening, awakening onto the greens, the green society. And yes. I work in a, um. I work in an industry that a lot of people want to see closed down. But what would you have if you didn't have steel? What would you have for your national defense if you didn't have steel? There's a lot of things going on here in the political realm, and I totally agree with Don. They should make a, give us a donation uh, of some sort. You know, as much as they wanna, they wanna uh, squeeze it out of the ratepayers. And you know, it's like, we're, we had to pay for their boondoggle when they wanted to put a, a nuclear power plant next to the facility that I work at. So. I agree with you, Don. They should give us a donation. I totally agree with you. And there's one, one thing I will say is that they've been actually that they have no sense, they have no uh commitment to the ratepayers. The bottom line, and that's what everybody should realize, the bottom line to them is what, what they're paying out on their, on their uh uh, stock every day, what their stock quote is. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the council? This will be held over for third reading. Uh, Ms. Nyla, next ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only. An ordinance vacating a portion of public street in the city of Michigan City located south and east of the improved Teminus and Edgewood Avenue and west and north of the West Teminus of Westchester Court. And this is also introduced by Ms. Jagus.
Again, this was advertised in the Herald Dispatch August third. Um, tonight will be a formal public hearing. Any comments from the sponsor?
Yes, I would say this is very similar to the last one, so just ditto.
All right, thank you. Any comments from the public? This is a formal public hearing.
Yeah, Tommy Klavik, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I agree with Councilwoman Jigus, same as the other ones. That's the same way I feel. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Comments from the council? That being said, this will be held over for third reading. Ms. Nyla, uh, next ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the aviation aviation fuel fund for the purchase of aviation fuel due to the drastic increase in fuel prices. And this, this is introduced by Mr. Simmons and Ms. Deitch.
And I saw, oh, there, there you are. All right, um, any, um, this was advertised in the Herald Dispatch on August third. Tonight will be a formal pub, public hearing. And any comments from the sponsors? You, you got any comments?
Again, it's the same fight that we've all been fighting uh, at the gas pumps uh. With the high price of the gas this year, uh, they run into a shortage. This is their source of revenue and which uh, they sell gas out at the airport.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? I know that we have our fearless director here. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? All right, comments from the council or any questions?
Um, I wanna move, we have third reading on the sec, so second that.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick and a second by Councilman Paul Pupulinski to move to third reading. Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jigus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszulinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Preszulinski?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, we will move this on to third reading. Ms. Nyla, please read uh, first ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance on third reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the aviation fuel fund for the purchase aviation fuel due to the drastic increase in fuel prices. And this is introduced by Mr. Simmons and Ms. Deitch.
Any additional comments from the sponsors? All right, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Most to approve. Sports.
We have a, a motion by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick and a second by Councilman Bryant Dabney. Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Ms. Jigus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszulinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszulinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and.
All right, it passes. All right. Ms. Nyla, our last ordinance by title only on third reading.
An ordinance on third reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the local income tax economic development formerly known as CEDIT fund for the call engineering service, services with John A. Doyle and Associates and Primera Engineering. And this is also introduced by Ms. Jagus.
All right, this was advertised in the Herald Dispatch on July twentieth, and the formal public hearing was held on August second. Um, any comments from the sponsor?
Uh, I believe this is just as an on-call system, so until we hire a city engineer, and I hope I hope we get a city engineer because we really could use one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Nope. All right, comments from the council. Councilman Paul?
Uh, I have a, a question for the sponsor. Um, is this uh, timeframe on this? When's the start date and the end date?
Uh, I'm not sure. I'm like, if that's, uh. But yeah, it's, it's a contract and, and as, as they do services, they, they submit their bills. I believe it's just for this year. I don't believe it's gonna over next year the way things go, but like, maybe Yvonne has a, has a response to that, Yvonne?
Well, usually when you have a, a contract, you state in there the uh, uh, how, the term, right, the term, thank you, of it, and I didn't come across any
You didn't either.
when I was reading the contract and that the only thing I have is an effective date and that, that's all I have in, in there. So, with that being said.
So the question?
It says, it's, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
It says that in, in section three in the term. It, it says for work on individual projects began during that calendar year until the project is completed. So. Does that mean that they get assigned to a sewer project? And it's out of this money and you, you don't, you know, the term of that sewer project, I mean. I just don't. I don't like the language that's in there. It's just, it should be for, from this date forward and to, for one year. It should be stated in, the way I look at it in the very first sentence of the agreement. So. Uh, so, you know, I understand what it says about compensation. And I just have a problem with the no end date. And I don't like the way that, that terminology is in there for assigning a project. So, does that mean that you're doing a project and it's ongoing for a year, year and a half or whatever? I mean, I, I would think that we, if you're gonna spend that much money, it, it would stay for each firm, how long it's gonna be for that, that year. You know, I think it's simple. It's not asking a lot, so. You guys can vote on it. I'm not. I'm in opposition of it because it doesn't have that language. So you all can do what you want. But to me, it's too open. We gotta close the parameters legally.
Controller Hofmaster, um. Does, is this for just this year or is it on-call until the money runs out? How, how does this work?
Yes, typically, these contracts are for the current budget year that the money is appropriated. And the language in there is put in there because if they are doing a project for the city, they are allowed to complete that. But when you're looking at a project that's gonna take multiple years to complete, it's not going to be done on an on-call service contract.
Yes, Councilman Paul.
So what are you saying? That this hundred fifty grand is just for this year?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying? I take stab at this.
That, that is correct. Seventy-five thousand is to cover the John Doyle contract that was passed by the Border Works yesterday. And the other seventy-five thousand is um, going towards the Primera contract that was passed earlier this year by the Border Works.
For, for three months. Seventy-five grand for three months on-call.
If the money is not spent, it just is just returned to this fund.
Uh, Councilman, um, Bryant Dabney?
Yvonne, uh, don't take a seat just yet. But to me, this sounds almost like a purchase order. We're appropriating funds and then as they do on-call work for us, they will send us invoices that we will then charge against this money. If we only charge twenty thousand dollars of the seventy-five, the rest of the money will go back to whatever account that it came from? Yes, that is correct. It'll go, it'll stay in the lit fund, which is where we're asking. So this is not a check that goes into the pocket of the? No, no. Now, it's about appropriation, that if it's not fully used, money will go back to the account that it came from? That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick.
Yeah, that was pretty much exact. So this is essentially a retainer. But they don't get it unless their service is rendered.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the council? This is um, on third reading.
Most to approve.
The part?
We have a motion by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick and a second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Mr. Paul Preszulinski?
Nay.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Preszulinski.
You already got Paul.
We already got him.
All right.
It's the first time I could have voted twice.
You could. We have eight in favor and one opposed.
All right, thank you. It passes. We have no new business under unfinished business. We um, have appointments that we'll get to for the social status of African-American males. And then now we are two comments from the public. The floor is open. Who's first?
Tommy Klavik, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. Wednesday was the first day of school. I want to talk about the Michigan City area schools. I'm sure that we're all passionate about. I was very happy to hear the school system has now acquired deed and title and now own the Brown Mackey campus. It is gonna be a five-point-eight million dollar project. It's gonna be used for early childhood early in the center. I'm very happy to hear that. Now, my kids are going to eight, four tiers of the Michigan City area schools, and all the way from the pre-aid to graduation day. Um, they, uh, one thing I'd like to do is there is an ordinance that's prohibited to have any signage on your building that advertise the business closed. Brown Mackey College went out of business years ago. They still got the signage on their building. Brown Mackey College, they got a big marquee out front, Brown Mackey. They've got another sign flipped over. It says family dollar. Uh, that, that's, I'm gonna go to the school board and ask them. They need to take that down immediately. Um, the other thing is, you know, Paz Road, the county, the Woodruff and Sons last month, they totally reconstructed their portion from Johnson Road to the East entrance to Michigan City High School. All new fresh, blacktop, all new fresh paint. The section between the east entrance to Michigan City High School to Cleveland Avenue extension is atrocious. And we gotta host our schools for other events, you know, almost on a daily basis. Uh, there, I'd like to either reach out to Congressman Marban or Senator Braun or Senator Young to have federal funding. There is a great big Army, US Army Reserve base there. They use Paz Road with their trucks. I feel they, that, that should be totally federal government project. Um, thirdly, um, the hi, high school football season starts Friday night. Uh, what was it? Gonna travel over, take on Warsaw? They got their second game the next Friday at home against Lafayette Jefferson. They go on to the Dooling, Dooling Conference schedule. They gotta play Dooling Conference teams from week three all the way, all the way through when they gotta play the semi-state. That's the way it's set up now. Um, I, I think we're, we're coming off of, we're another uh, sectional and regional championship. We've, we're coming, we're the number uh, four ranked team right now in class four A. I just want everybody to get out uh, in, in that game. I, I got a senior now this year. She's an honor student. She's gonna get the Michigan City Promise Scholarship. Uh, that, that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Alavi, yes. Um, s, Mr. Santana, are you online?
Yeah. Yeah, yes, I am. Can you?
Uh, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, cool. Hey, thank, thanks so much and uh, good to uh, talk to you guys. Uh, you know, uh, picking up where Tommy left off a little bit because I do live right off of Paz Road here. And um, what I have uh, been informed over, you know, years is the county, which did take care of their uh, portion of uh, from Johnson Road heading to the west to the end of the parking lot of, um, I still call it Rogers, but you know, it's Michigan City High School. So that's the city's obligation to come from Cleveland up into that other point. So uh, it has been coordinated in the past, uh, you know, when I was uh, in Baltimore with County. Uh, you know, both uh, uh, representatives of, of those departments, you know, got together and said, hey, we're gonna do it on this time, or we'll shut down the road from here to there. And so I'm just hoping and asking, I guess, uh, do, do, do you have a date that you're thinking about doing this? I thought it was going to happen before school got back in session, but as we know, the kids are going back too. And it's a rough road, uh, down, uh, uh, like I say, just coming off of Cleveland. So I just wanted to make uh, make mention of that and uh, I appreciate you guys and uh, thanks again for hearing me out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Santana. Nice to hear your voice. Additional comments from the public?
Good evening. Ernie Hall, I'm in three oh two Gladys Street. I'm disappointed this seats are empty here. It's, it it just disappoints me. Nobody shows interest in what's happening in Michigan City. It's sad. Even your mayor's not even here. He's, he should be here. If there's any questions need answered, he should be here to answer those questions. But unfortunately, he's not. Uh. My granddaughter had an issue with the housing authority. Mr. McCormick. And Stacy's got to straighten down for me. She had been on the list from back when Joyce Gaston was still running that place, because I went with her and put her on that list. And when Joyce retired, I went with her again with new people. Lo and behold, I find out she's not even on the list. Somebody had removed her. So it, it's sad what, what happened to her to wait that long and still not even get into housing. So I just wanted to run that by that. Thank God I got people that can do something for her. I think, yeah, I just wanted to.
Thank you.
I wanted to.
Did they lose the list?
No.
I mean, what happened to the list?
Um. We're taking care of it.
All right, thank you.
Um, Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. I was at the last workshop when it's uh, Bronx City officials and speaking about the A R P money. Couple of things that offended me. And I'm gonna start off with the water department person. When I was growing up connecting city residents to water. The man stood here and said they never asked. So why should we go out there? Uh, that was hard to accept. Uh, then I come to find out that Amazon is not coming to Michigan City. But yet you all want to spend, I, I don't have my.
But yet y'all want to spend, I don't have my paper in front of me, one point something million dollars to run water out to an empty field. We already got one field of dreams right there on Pine Street that we put a million dollars in and nobody, everybody sitting up here acting like they don't know what's happening. But so, somebody needs to be held accountable for their actions. We can't keep approving stuff and it's nothing there. We need that money in our neighborhoods. There's neighborhoods that need that money. And, and we need to do the right thing. Then I heard the park department. Now, I'm all for ADA playgrounds and all that stuff. I love it. I wish I lived in the second ward or I wish I lived in your ward, Doc, but we have a lot of neglected playgrounds in Michigan City. I remember when the water tower first was put up. Has nothing happened, nothing's changed since then. We're talking about spending a lot of money at the beach for that playground. How about the rest of the playgrounds? Me and Jean from the six, Angie, we from, we from King, out there by King Center. When are they going to change our playgrounds? We need to invest in every playground in Michigan City. Every playground. And something in there should be handicap accessible for every child. A little bit at a time, but to put it all in one area where the majority of us don't go or we are, we not even want it. And then to hear all the projects that y'all wanted to spend this ARP money, everybody was making money off of. We had the bus shelters or stations, whatever you want to call them. They are going to put advertising to make money. The water department is going to make money. The park department, I thought they said something about selling tickets or doing something. I, I, I just, it's troubling what's going on in our community. Some of these things we should not be passing. It, it just inspired me to run for office and I'm just going to do what I have to do on my end. And I encourage everybody out on TV. If you have a passion and you're tired of the way things are, please run for office. Step up and do your job, do your duty, step up. And then last thing on the ARP money. We have a lot of city boards, including the social status of African-American male. The ARP money, we shouldn't have to ask you for a dime. We're a city board. Don't y'all think y'all should just take some of the ARP money and give each board ten thousand or maybe fifteen thousand dollars? After all, all the money goes to the controller. We can't spend one dime of it until we go to the controller. And we must have a vote on what we spend the money on. For the social status, there's only three line items we can spend it on. This is something that I shouldn't be up here asking nobody to do. This is something that you guys should already know. I heard you say something about the woman commission, about money. We got to go out and big and borrow for money and it's helping the people? No, 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 no. Take that ARP money right now and give each board a, a slice of it. No board is better than no other board, so just make it even them out. But shame on no, this public not knowing that Amazon's not coming. I don't know if we trying to win elections. I don't know what we're trying to do. But this public should know that Amazon is not coming. We, we got holes on a, a grocery store that should have came to Eastport, it didn't come. We got to stop it now. Tell the public the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Any additional comments from the public? Yes, Mr. Carlson.
Hi, my name is Rick Carlson. I'm a, a member of Michigan City Municipal Band and I'm here to thank the city council for their ongoing cooperation and contribution to the city council. And we're, we just finished our one hundred fifty-fourth season and I'm just happy to be here. Our conductor is Dr. Jeff Dobler and assistant conductor is Quincy Ford. And I have some notes from, oh, I discussed this with Jeff. We're, we're having a business meeting right now down at the amphitheater. I had to leave that early, but here were some of his thoughts. That we play approximately ten selections per week. And Jeff makes an effort to guarantee that each week we have at least one composition by a female composer and at least one composition by an underrepresented minority group, African-American, Hispanic, Native American, et cetera. Often there are more than one of each of those categories on our concerts. And we've endeavored to include works by women composers and people of color to make our programming more representative of this community at large. The narration notes prepared by Dr. Dobler that are read every week by myself teach our audiences and the band about the historical significance of each composition and composer. And here are some of the things that are hallmarks of our twenty twenty-two season. We had quick approval by the park board, a four-dollar parking fee on Thursday nights, which was a great boon to us. I think I noticed probably, I'd say a fifteen to twenty percent increase in attendance at our concerts when this was approved mid-season. So we're really thankful to Shannon Easton, Eddie Shin. I, I call him Eddie because I grew up in the neighborhood with him. Phil Latchford and the park board. And that has been just a great, it was fast-tracked through. The agenda had already been set, but Shannon called Phil and said, no, it's a great idea. We're going to go ahead and put that on the agenda and they did. And within two or three days, we had an answer. It was wonderful. Also, the grounds and facilities are always well-maintained, including lovely flowers. The upper part of the amphitheater was painted. The parks personnel react quickly to maintenance issues, including fallen tree limbs, broken lights, broken steps, et cetera. We had large and enthusiastic audiences. Our audiences seem to really appreciate the privilege of attending concerts at our beautiful amphitheater. And we're able to maintain the great tradition of music in Washington Park thanks to the generous support of the city of Michigan City for one hundred and fifty-four years. As the bands announcer several times throughout our season, I remind our audiences that we are the exception in a favorable way and not the rule to be fully funded by Michigan City. We are extremely blessed with a beautiful amphitheater and a beautiful park next to a beautiful beach on one of the Great Lakes. The question arises, is there any other city on the Great Lakes with this bounty? And to think it's been happening for one hundred and fifty-four years is really astounding. And so I just want to take this opportunity to thank the city council and thank the parks board for ongoing cooperation. It's been really wonderful. There are probably four, five, six bands in this state that are funded municipally. And we probably have the most beautiful venue and we're really thankful. So I appreciate your, your help. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Any additional public comment? Go ahead, Mr. Ern.
Got one. As far as Water Tower Park, they were out there last, last week, I believe, and I stopped and spoke with the park department and a whole bunch of other people. I don't know who they were. But they told me that construction will be started next year on that.
Yes.
They're going to move the playground to the other end of the park, do all kinds of work there. So they are going to work on that hopefully. That's been in the plans for several years, so.
Yeah, they approved it.
Starts next year.
They approved the funding about a month ago, six weeks ago. Any additional public comment? No more public comment, council comments. Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick. Yeah, ready?
Thank you, ma'am chair.
Thank you.
So just really two quick things. So one with the Paz Road comment. I remember when I first got on the council, that was one of the things I worked on a lot, trying to get the lighting on Paz Road. I was trying to get the roads repaved and trying to get curbing and sidewalk because there's a lot of foot traffic up and down Paz Road going from the apartment complexes out there to the shopping area behind Meyer and the Amerplex and all that. It's been, you know, a back and forth thing because with the former engineer, they were saying that, oh, well, we have to get an MOU with the county. The north side of the street is the city, the south side of the street is the county. We have to have some type of coordination with that. And that's to speak to what Mr. Santana was saying as far as there has to be some type of coordination. And then with the pre, with the, the last engineer we had, it was mentioned to him. I don't know if he had put a plan in place to get that on the list and base it off the Pacer rating when they were going to work on that. So that one, I don't know where that is now with us not having an engineer. If that's something that's still in the works, but it's something that has been a pet peeve of mine since I've been on the council and I've been diligently trying to get as much as we can get done out there. Like I said, it's a lot of foot traffic out there. There wasn't even lighting until I was able to get the lighting out there. So hopefully we can get some answers on that and, and get some, some type of work done or at least the, the process started. And other thing, I try not to, you know, play into rumors and hearsay, but I keep hearing the same thing from different people and I'm trying to get some clarity on it. So I figured the best place to ask it is right here. So anybody in the public or anybody within the administration or anybody that knows anybody, please feel free to send me some information. I keep hearing about a, a incident with the mayor running into something or wrecking the vehicle. Here means incident where there may have been some type of accident leaving the scene. I, I don't know if any of this is true and I'm not saying this, that is fact, but I would like to know. Is this what happened? Did this occur? Was law enforcement contacted? Is there a process where this vehicle is being repaired? Where is the vehicle? Where's the mayor? Questions I'd like to ask, I mean, I mean, I'd like answers to. I know that, you know, we all just recently saw a former president had their house raided by the FBI. So that proves nobody's above the law. So if these things did occur, I'd like to know what's the next step in the process. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Don for Valinsky.
Well, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I, I have a few, a few items to talk about. But first of all, I want to start off. Thank you, Mr. Carlson, for coming tonight. I went to the last band concert of the season last Thursday night. And as usual, the municipal band does an outstanding job. And next year I will be in more concerts, Rick. I guarantee you that, yeah. And I invite everybody from the public to come out and I thank the city for continually financing the band. And when you told last week, you said one hundred and fifty-four consecutive years, that this band has been, you know, in existence. To me, that's, that's amazing. Hundred and fifty-four years for something like that to keep going along. And I know the members, you know, you kind of think, well, it's a Michigan City band and a lot of these people live in Michigan City. I know there's a lot of people that live in the surrounding communities around Michigan City that belong to this band. So anyway, Rick, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for sharing some facts and keep up the fantastic work with you and the band and hope to see you next year down there. Okay? The other thing I wanted to talk about was the Long Beach sewer project. I know all council members have got a copy of this contract and probably got a couple copies of it. The reason I, I bring it up, the reason I want to go through the portion that I think is important is so that the community understands where we stand financially with this project. There have been innuendos coming out that the city council made the wrong mistake. The city council and the city are now going to have to pay five hundred thousand dollars to the city of Long Beach, so we did not go long with this project. Okay? And that is totally untrue. All right, and let me just read this part of it right here. It is the intent of the parties that the district, talking about sanitary district, is not to bear any of the cost of this project. Okay, the city doesn't bear any of the costs. And all such costs are to be borne by the town, Long Beach and its residents. It is also the intent of the parties that all the costs associated with the project, including but not limited to all engineering, because that was the big talking point, that we were going to have to pay four hundred thousand dollars for engineering costs for this project and that kept going back and forth. That is not the case whatsoever. And I spoke to Jim Myers again this evening and I intend, and I attended the sanitary district board meeting last week. That's where I got this information from. And just as a sidebar, they have already notified the city of Long Beach twice. When are we going to receive our monies? And they have not received one letter back from the city of Long Beach to any of those notification check. So with that being said, okay, including but not limited to all engineering, financial consulting, related fees are to be covered and paid for from proceeds of the contemplated SRF funding to the maximum extent of state laws. Well, that's not going to happen. So we're not getting any SRF funding. However, this commitment by the town to reimburse the district for the project-related expenditures shall be enforceable, even if the project is not completed. The town shall reimburse the district as required herein within sixty days of being determined by the district cannot be reimbursed from the proceeds of the project or the termination of the project will not be completed for any reason. So when the city council voted no, I don't know, two months ago or two and a half months ago, it's well over sixty days. We should have received some kind of notification from Long Beach. But we should have received financing that the city spent so far. We should have received that from the city of Long Beach. So I just wanted to get that out to the public. And just wanted to make sure all the council members know exactly what we're dealing with here. Being a liaison to the sanitary district, I thought that that was my responsibility to inform all the council members exactly what's going on with this, this deal there. And one more thing about the ARP money. And we have snow removal, right? Both on Michigan Boulevard, both on Franklin Street. We signed that ordinance, what, three years ago? We still don't have a appropriate piece of equipment do that snow removal. ARP funding is here. We don't want to do that. Then we use Riverboat. We don't want to use that. And talking to Councilwoman Tillman, let's try to get tip funding to do that. But it's already, it's August. Okay, it takes five to six months to get this equipment. That's going to be snowing again and we're going to be sitting here right where we're at. You know, if nobody wants to make a decision from the administration, then I know that we can't make a decision without the administration saying something. But I know the street superintendent is asking for this equipment. Council members are asking for this equipment. It's long overdue and we need to find out what's going on with that. And then just one more thing, and I know that the city comptroller is here this evening. You buy the House Master? This letter that the city council members received from the Attorney General Todd Rukita about this opioid monies that the city is supposed to be receiving. Are you aware of it, of this letter? That the city is supposed to be receiving somewhere in the neighborhood? Well, they call it a restricted payment of nine hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. I don't know, this year or next year combined? Can't, I, I can't understand all of it, but are you familiar with?
Yep, I received that. I'm working my way, I'm working my way, reading through hundreds of pages of documentation on it.
Okay. Well, can, can we get, can the council get an explanation of what this is all about or in a test?
I have no clue, but I'll have Amber get in and talk to you.
Can we get an answer by the next council meeting?
I'll have Amber. Amber's going to have to okay, do the legalese and all of that.
Yeah. We are, we are.
I appreciate it because I'm interested. It's, it's close to a million dollars and I'm sure we could use that somewhere. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Jakes.
Thank you. I would also like to continue on this a little bit of a musical tone today. Michigan City Chamber Music Festival is going on right now. It is world-class musicians performing for free at the First Presbyterian Church. I would really like encourage you, and then there's a children's program this weekend. Check them out. They're at MCCMF.org. MCC, Michigan City Chamber Music Festival MF.org. Also, please, everyone, check to see if your voting registration is up to date. Occasionally people get purged from the voting rolls and you want to be ready. Registration for the November election closes on October eleventh. To check your registration and make sure you know if you're good, it's indiana voters dot I N dot go. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman Jiegus. Yes, Councilman Paul Gublans.
I would like also, uh, on the, to thank Rick for coming here and for all your years of service and at doing the band. I know you're a long-term member. That I won't say that I sponsored a, a resolution honoring Guy Foreman. And I, I appreciate, and that's why that the band is important to the city, and that's why, you know, it's, I, I'll always argue to fund that band, because I think it's a, a, it's actually, besides being a good PR thing, it is one of the arts, and we need to support the arts. But now, talking about what, uh, I guess Rodney took off. I don't know, is he out there somewhere? Rodney, coming back in here. Rodney has got a point about how the money is spent, because I remember as being on the Ames Field Committee, that there was supposed to be a reciprocating agreement with the city on, on the use of that park down there. Also, there was supposed to be a reciprocating agreement for the park at Marsh School. And there's not a lot of improvements down there, and I think that the playground at, at Ames Field could be greatly improved. But I do agree that I, I don't disagree with the concept of doing a handicap facility park or facilitating that. Is but maybe we should look at, instead of making it a venue, making it in, in a couple different spots. But to the point of how money is being spent, I want to remind the general public in the council that we have an eight-million-dollar tunnel to nowhere that we're still paying bond payments on that were supposed to be used for the Lafayette Sewer Project. That needs to be utilized. And evidently, the present administration could care less about that and what the people in the, in the second ward need relief and further south and into the fifth ward. That's a huge project. So now, what I will say that amazes me is that there's no lights in the green area around the former band shell or the gazebo. There are no lights in the gazebo. So it's rife for damage, and this isn't the first time that I brought that up. And I went down there the other night as a, a late-night drive. There's one light in the middle of the green area. None of the lights that, the ornamental lights that were down there have just been sitting there and not trying to fix them or replace them. It's really shabby, okay? I'll tell you, it, it's shabby. And so now, we don't have any parking attendance. I guess we got money to burn. Well, I went down there the other day, there was eighty-seven cars. And this was on a, it was a Sunday, it was kind of iffy out there, you know? There's eighty-seven cars when I went through there just from outside of Michigan City. Now, one thing that really irks me, because I believe in open government and transparency, is that I brought this up before about the Board of Works meeting in the evening, so working people can make the meetings, not always meeting at eight-thirty in the morning. Nothing's happened. Now, other administrations have done this to make it accessible to the public. And, but now, they've gone one step further that you have to make out a document on what you want to talk about. They passed a procedure, or they enacted a procedure at the meeting this week, that you have to, in advance, I guess, go to the clerk's office and make out paperwork on what you want to talk about at the meeting. So I, I just want to say this, is that I think that is a total slap in the face for everyone in Michigan City, because that should be an open meeting when it says it's for comments by the general public. And something might come to somebody's mind at that meeting, and they want to say something about it or make a good point. Uh, Tommy makes a, Tom makes a lot of good points there. Couple weeks ago or months ago, Dave Beal brought up, brought up some items about the flow of water out on Kinsel Ditch. A lot of people don't know what Kinsel Ditch is and where it flows. It flows in the Black Ditch. In Porter County, it's a, a, but anyway, he's, they, Mr. Beal is supposed to be meeting with Brad Menick on resolving some of these issues or looking into it. But the bottom, but the line is, is how the money's being spent. And, and here's, here's what I'll get at. You got a sewer, you have a tunnel in the ground, and we're not utilizing it. And the, I just don't get the con, I don't get the concept of the administration totally resisting on utilizing this piece of concrete that's in the ground for eight million dollars. Eight million-dollar bond issue, I'm not making this up, and it's sitting there idle in the ground when it could be utilized to correct the sewer problems. And I gotta tell you, truthfully, I've never seen such, you know, we passed a, uh, I guess what I'm driving at here is we passed a resolution unanimously, and I don't know if you want to call it a, uh, non-confidence resolution on the administration's comments. And I have not seen such a, uh, resistant administration, and I've worked with quite a few mayors. And I've just, um, amazes me how this administration is doesn't want to listen or really work. Now, he listens, he does listen to certain people who, uh, go along with his, with his road. If you're driving on, on, on his road, his path, you're okay. But if you want to, want to question anything, you're, you're not okay. So I, I like, uh, I like getting the, uh, my name brought up on, on the news, you know, and, and I, I really do, I enjoy that. So if, if you want to do that some more, go right ahead, Mayor, because, you know, people enjoy that too. My dad had a term for that, but I'll reserve that comment. I think Donnie knows what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional council comments? Any additional council comments? All right, I have a few. So as far as the Lafayette Sewer Project, we, we, we do have an opportunity to get that done, but it will take the administration to, to move forward. And I know previously it was an expensive, uh, expen, more expensive to move forward, but there have been some alternatives that, that have been shared. And I know we've had some discussions. I've talked to Skylar, and, and he's talked to some engineers, and I'm sure that Controller Hoffmaster as well. And the engineering piece is only approximately about fifty thousand dollars, and maybe less than a million to complete the whole entire project. But it will take for the administration to move forward with that, and I highly encourage them to do that. As far as the parks, one of the things that we had a, a great discussion on, and I, and I'll also help Councilman Don Privilinski and Shannon with this, having our parks adopted by local companies. And NIPSCO can be a very big, spend a lot of money, we're gonna lose the tax base there. But seeking out funds and, and allowing companies to adopt these parks and, and help spend some of the money and, and keeping these parks. I knew Water Tower was coming up, that they were starting that. But again, I think there's an opportunity in other cities that local companies, that right now, health is a big deal, because it's cheaper if we have healthier people, uh, cheaper insurance, cheaper everything. So there's some opportunities for us to gain some, some momentum on getting some local companies to possibly, because it came from a CEO who, he's, why wouldn't you do that at all the parks? So maybe there's an opportunity for that. But I, I would say this to, since Controller Hoffmaster is here, but the Lafayette Sewer Project is one that I highly encourage. If we can get it on the books, we got third reading on the next one to get that done. So I support that, so hopefully, we can do something. But I do, I don't want to, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say, because we're gonna, we have five Tuesdays this month. Women's Equality Day is on August twenty-sixth to commemorate the nineteen-twenty adoption of the Nineteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution, which prohibits the states and the federal government from, from denying the right to vote to citizens of the United States on the basis of sex. And on that day, the Women's Commission is having their ten-year anniversary. And it will be at the ORAC on the twenty-sixth. Tickets, you still can probably get them this week, but we're finalizing the event as far as the count this week. So the last push, I would say tomorrow, Thursday at the latest. If you would like to get tickets, you can actually purchase them at the Controller's Office. If you would like to participate, again, it's gonna be a great event. We have several speakers that will be there. We have a DJ, we have some, a, a live jazz trio, some spoken word. It's gonna be a great event, so I would love to see your face in the place. And with school starting this week again, please be cognizant, the buses have video cameras on them now. So, you know, if, if you want to run past a bus or do something crazy, you, you're probably gonna be on video, which is a good thing. So please keep our babies safe out there and our young adults and our students safe. And did you have, you, you, did you have something else? You keep doing this to me. What, what else?
I, 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 I ju, I just want to say that I wanted to thank Councilman Don Prizvelinski for making the point on all the hearsay and ne- negative notions that were put out there about the contract with Long Beach and all the falsehoods that people were putting out there to intimidate, to intimidate the council to vote in, in, in favor of that and not do the right thing. And I, I just want to say, Don, Councilman Don Prizvelinski, I want to thank you for bringing that forward and bringing it out here, so the, the public knows that the administration was trying to intimidate us, and a lot of people from Long Beach were trying to intimidate us, the board. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like you're trying to get brony points with your brother. You in the doghouse?
We're brothers, you know what they say?
Okay, all right, anyway. Um, so with that being said, like I said, keep our, keep our kids safe, and I'll call for adjournment.
I'm supposed to adjourn.
All right, thank you. You all have a wonderful evening.